Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for this first meeting, this second meeting in June of 2022 at this Metro National Public Schools Board of Education. We are now called to order and have established barely a quorum. We do have one that's visiting from out of state, joining us virtually. All right, could we have Jason Freeman from SEIU lead us in the pledge? If you wouldn't mind coming to the podium, Mr. Freeman. Thank you so much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I will accept a recommendation or a motion to accept the agenda as listed.
Motion to accept the agenda as listed?
No, motion to...
Mrs. Tyler, we hear you. Go right ahead.
We got to see her, too.
Ah, touche.
Hi, um, sorry, I texted you, but a sign up come through.
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to pull the student handbook off the consent agenda.
All right, so that is Consent Item 1E, okay? Any other amendments? All right, do I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Do you have a second? All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. Passed unanimously. We will move on then to the Director's Report. Dr. Battle, State of Schools.
Thank you so much, Chair Bugs. I am going to, as we wrap up this school year for a second time, since we're nearing the end of June and the end, nearing the end of Promising Scholars this Thursday, I would like to share a State of Schools video to recap, to celebrate, and to just kind of kick off where we are and how we're moving forward into the next school year. I will remember the 21-22 school year as another year that really defined who we are as Metro National Public Schools, who we are as a Nashville community. And we're a community, we're a learning institution that pulls together, that overcomes obstacles together for the benefit of our students. Let's face it, one of the greatest challenges of this past school year was continuing to navigate the pandemic. There were challenges early on, but after a few months and years of navigating the pandemic, there's exhaustion, right, of making sure that we are really aligned to the science and to the research and making sure that our students are transitioning back in and our staff are transitioning back into an in-person learning environment. And so, on a large scale, in a large district like Metro National Public Schools, it was important for us to make sure all those safety measures were in place and that we were meeting the needs of our students and our staff as they transitioned. So, that was probably our greatest challenge this year in navigating the pandemic and in an in-person, all-in-person learning environment, which is something we've never done before. But again, I'm proud of our students, I'm proud of our staff for staying committed and just being persistent and making sure that our focus remained where it needs to remain on a daily basis. I will remember 21-22 as a year of success. Lots of successes for our students, lots of victories for their academic learning, their social-emotional development, and all the fun things that go along with being educated in a public education school system and specifically in Metro National Public Schools. Over the past 12 months, we've really been digging in and operationalizing what every student known means to our organization, but also to every leader in MNPS, and we consider our students leaders. We've been focusing on going deeper around our navigator model, making sure that every student has a caring adult who's checking in with them daily and helping to connect them to resources and supports to ensure that they're successful. We've been able to also implement and continue some programs that we know meets the unique needs of our students. When I think about our Promising Scholars opportunities, where our students are able to continue to be enriched and engaged throughout the summer and growing and learning at the same time, I think about our Accelerating Scholars Program that allowed us to provide high-impact tutoring opportunities to our students in need. I also think about the work that we've implemented around social-emotional learning, advocacy centers in all of our elementary schools, and now we're expanding to have restorative practice assistance in all of our secondary schools. And I do not want to forget the work around transitions for our students. We've been working diligently to ensure that all of our students have transition plans. Where we're taking the time to sit down with our students, to know what journey they're on, where they aspire to be, from one grade to the next and from one tier to the next. And we're continuing to really develop our personalized student dashboard so that as we're thinking about every student known, we can follow their data, their information, again, their paths and journeys that they're on to make sure that they're prepared for their post-secondary opportunities. As a district, we've been able to leverage our investments to address the academic needs of our students, as well as many other areas of their development. We've been able to think about and really design our instructional time throughout the day to meet the Tier One instructional needs of our students, making sure that grade-level exposure and supports are there. We've been able to leverage some of our ESSR funds to think about and really design our personalized learning time to meet those individual needs of our students. So whether we're talking about the foundational skills of our students and those Tier One standards that our students must meet, our schools have come together, we've developed plans, we've developed master schedules, we've trained our teams to make sure that we can leverage all of those components of our literacy block to truly meet the needs of our students. I've had the opportunity to go out and visit one of our advocacy centers, and the role and the impact that that advocacy center is playing in that learning community is tremendous. What I was able to witness was our certificated staff, our support staff, all of our team members, including our advocacy coaches, coming together to proactively pour into our students and to make sure that they have a toolbox of strategies and tools to help them really maximize their instructional time. I saw collaboration in classrooms, I saw collaboration outside of classrooms, I saw students recognizing, heard students recognizing, the growth that they made from the start of the year throughout the year. Right, so when you're talking about students' ability to increase their self-awareness and to be able to reflect on their own development, that's what the advocacy centers are providing for our schools.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Advocacy Center is basically a place that I go to calm down if I am overheated mainly on a fop. Then the Stevenson's will help me calm down, and then I would have a better rest of the day. It's usually when I'm angry or when I can't pay attention in class, so I will come down here and then sit down here. I would do a reflection seat, and then we will basically talk it out, and then I can go back to class and grab a little pom-pom that makes me calm down, and then I can get back on task in class.
They're also providing us an ability to increase and maximize instructional time. Advocacy Center coaches are working inside of our classrooms. The majority of their time is spent in classrooms side by side with teachers and working with students to make sure that in a proactive and a sustainable way, we're providing students the direct support that they need. In fact, I would call it immediate support that they need based upon things that they might be experiencing throughout the school day, maybe something they experienced at home or in their community. It's all about us all coming together and wrapping our arms around our students to make sure that they're able to thrive. That's what the advocacy centers have shown me, have proven to me thus far. I think if I zoomed out even more than that, we're seeing positive impact around our discipline incidents across the district. Seeing a positive impact with regards to attendance for our students and from hearing from families, our ability to keep students engaged and learning in school. And that translates into excitement about coming to school, about being a part of their learning community. Every student known in Metro National Public Schools means lots of things to me. It means that we are a school district focused not just on numbers or data for our students, and that that information is quite important. But we see our students as individuals, as human beings, as students who have unique needs, talents, and aspirations. And when we're thinking about every student known, that is our commitment to making sure that our students are not just numbers or bodies in seats, but they're human beings that we want to care about, that we value, and that we want to ensure on a path towards success.
Our student athletes showed up strong this year, both on and off the field, with 68 high school teams earning a T double S double A Academic Achievement Award for grade point averages during their seasons. We saw state championships for Hume-Foggs volleyball team, East High School's basketball team, Pearl Cone Girls' track, a trip to the 3A State Football Championship game by East Magnet, along with several championship medals in track and field and wrestling, Tennessee Titans Mr. Football, T double S double A Mr. Basketball Award, McDonald's All-American, and countless other accomplishments in tennis, lacrosse, soccer, baseball, and more.
I'm so proud to be a part of a learning organization that has focused so much on our Academies of Nashville structure. I mean, it is a structure that recognizes that we must do a few things. We must put relevant and rigorous curriculum in front of our students. We must build positive relationships with our students to make sure that we recognize who they are as individuals and the care we want to provide to them as they prepare for life after high school and a system that ensures readiness for our students. Through the Academies of Nashville, we've been able to create work-based learning opportunities. We've been able to create experiential learning opportunities for our students. We've been able to expand our industry credentials for our students as high school students to leverage after and while they're high school students here in MNPS. When I think about our expansion with work-based learning, we wanted to make sure that our students aren't having to make an early choice around career and graduating with their high school diploma. So through this initiative, we've been able to offer many, many work-based learning opportunities where our students are studying in a career field that is interesting to them, that they feel meets their skill set, but also earning a wage to help them in their career development. Simply put, we want our students to be thinking about their career paths. And instead of just working random jobs or making a choice of attending school or being in their coursework, we wanted to really drive deep around their career opportunities and allow them to earn credit while also earning a wage to provide for themselves and their families.
This school year, we've made some great strides in expanding advanced academic offerings through our district, including dual credit and industry certifications. More than 4,700 exams were given throughout the district, which represents a 35% increase in the number of exams compared to last year and four times the number from 2019 to 2020. And the passage rate for these tests is consistent with those prior years. All 12 of our zone high schools, along with East Magnet and MLK, offered opportunities to earn industry certifications, and we've added or reinstated four industry certifications this year, piloted two more, and we are planning for more than a dozen next year with an educator-industry credential initiative, off to a great start so far this summer to get more CTE teachers credentialed in fields aligned with their pathways.
I'm so excited and inspired by the work of University of MNPS. This is Metro Nashville Public Schools' opportunity and way to partner with our post-secondary opportunities to get early exposure for our students as they prepare for life after graduation, while also creating seamless pathways for our students' success once they graduate high school. We're talking about college visits, we're talking about experiential learning opportunities, we're talking about expanded access to college-level courses that are rigorous in preparing students for their career opportunities. So I'm really excited about that. And when we're thinking about the seamless pathway, we're talking about removing barriers to students' access and their success. I mean, to name a few, we've expanded bridges to Belmont with Belmont University, where students receive full-ride scholarships to continue to grow and learn and continue their academic careers at Belmont University. We have a similar partnership with Lipscomb University, lift off to Lipscomb, that's focused on our Grow Your Own opportunities to further develop our aspiring educators right here in Metro Nashville Public Schools to come back and serve our very own students. We're talking about a partnership with Tennessee State University, where we're trailblazing to Tennessee State in four various academic fields to allow students full-ride scholarships so that they can, while in high school, continue to focus on growing and learning and expanding their horizons in their academic fields as they prepare for their transition to post-secondary.
As a proud graduate and now Director of Metro Nashville Public Schools, some of my proudest moments are being able to congratulate our graduating seniors, being able to send them off into their post-secondary opportunities, seeing their smiling faces as they walk across the stage, and the feeling of knowing that we've prepared them well, prepared them for the success they will have in their post-secondary opportunities, in their career fields, in whichever career field that they choose. And ultimately, I'm most proud that as Director of Schools, I get to fulfill the ultimate commitment that we make to our families and to our students. And that is not only graduating from Metro Nashville Public Schools, but being successful in career and life.
Change should not take as long as it takes sometimes. But I'm still proud to blaze this trail, and my many years as a student in Metro Nashville Public Schools played a big part in what I've been able to accomplish. So whether you're heading to college or into your career or the military, I just want you to know that you're going to be fine in the end. Not just fine, actually, you're going to be great. You might mess up here and there, but that's okay. I did, too. We are all human, and mistakes are a part of the deal. But I am here to tell you, class of 2022, you've got this. You've got the ability, the strength, and the character. Keep working, keep giving it your all, and you'll get there. You will reach your goals.
Over the course of the last year, I'm so proud that the resilience of our staff and our students really paved the way for us to have a successful school year. Our staff members came together, they were able to navigate a pandemic year, they were able to focus on every student being known as individuals to make sure that any disruptions caused to their learning environment or the pace of their learning or the conditions in which they were learning in were addressed. I'm so proud of our students who, once again, were resilient, coming back to a 100% in-person learning environment, being eager to learn, the smiles, the laughs, but all the light bulbs that went off for our students over the course of the year that also prove that they're recovering and they're progressing with regards to their academic outcomes.
Now, the district and school-level results are embargoed by the Tennessee Department of Education until July 6th, and our data team is still pouring through the data to ensure it is accurate. But the information I've seen so far is extremely promising. Based on the data released by the State of Tennessee and our initial review of our own data, we anticipate we're going to be on track to meet or exceed state-growth results in several areas. We have also seen growth in 13 out of 14 categories identified so far. While we've worked to put in tools, resources, and guidance to support you and your work, none of this would have happened without you, our teachers, staff, and administrators, who have dedicated yourselves to ensuring every student is known and cared for.
Our schools are Nashville's great engine of opportunity. They're also the physical foundation of our neighborhoods. Great public schools require consistent prioritization. Now, one year later, we are back with even more support for the district. $91.2 million of new funding, a new record. Consistent prioritization, sustained commitment for our kids. Now, this unprecedented investment will fund salary-staff increases at 4% cost-of-living adjustment that allows us to bring bus drivers up to competitive wages and to fill the more than 150 bus driver vacancies to get every child to their seat by the morning bell for a full day of learning. Now, for every parent who's had your morning disrupted by a late bus, this will help you. We're also proposing a pay increase for cafeteria workers and for the paraprofessionals who support our teachers with exceptional needs.
When you think about those caring cafeteria leads and workers who are ensuring that our students have nutritious meals every day, when you think about the paraprofessionals in our classrooms who are working side by side with students to make sure that their academic and social-emotional learning needs are being met, that's what I think about when I think about the historic investment that's been proposed for our support staff pay and their compensation. When I think about the challenge of our inability for many years to increase the pay and compensation of our supporting employees, this is an enormous step in the right direction. There is a need. There is a need to value those support employees who've been with us and committed so many years to making sure our students have what they need. And there is value in making sure that we can continue to recruit support employees who love our kids and who want to be a part of Metro Nashville Public Schools to excel and to move the needle in the right direction. I'm really excited about this investment, and I know it will pay dividends in our ability to provide all the supports necessary to educate our students in an effective way. As we prepare for the start of the 2022-23 school year, first and foremost, I'm excited about welcoming our staff back to plan and prepare to receive our students. I'm excited about welcoming our students back, and many of them, thousands of them, in fact, have spent the summer with us in Promising Scholars. But when it comes to where we are as a district, I believe that what I would highlight here is that we've set a strong foundation, a strong foundation that I believe will springboard us into continued success and continuous improvement. Next year will be about going deeper, reaching more students, being more responsive, and continuing on our journey to ensure that every MNPS student is known.
All right, thank you very much for that recap, Dr. Battle. It was an interesting year, but a great one. So thank you and to all MNPS staff for making it just happen. All right, we will now move on to the Consent Agenda. We had one item removed that was 1E, the Student Handbook. Can I get a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as amended?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda as amended.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. Passed unanimously. Now we'll look at the Student Handbook. Mrs. Tyler.
All right, thanks. First, I want to commend the committee who put together these recommendations. I know it's not an easy endeavor, and it took lots of time and care and thought. And I wanted to start off by saying I was really pleased to see several instances of making information more easily accessible, including information on our attendance policies and our HERO program for families of the students experiencing homelessness, among other information that was made more easily accessible. I just had a few questions and changes. It was the introduction of appropriate use of electronic devices. So the new handbook will say viewing or distribution of sexually explicit images, videos, and/or fights, i.e. airdrop, social media post, et cetera. And then it says if a student's rights are perceived to be violated, this may rise to the level of a Title IX investigation or incident, and at that point, you would follow standard Title IX procedures. So my question was, or my questions are, is that only pertaining to school-issued computers? Or does it count for any personal device that's on school grounds? And what about students who share inappropriate material on their personal device outside of school? Does it change if the material is about a student instead of just a random video online? Kind of just figuring out where do we draw the line in and where do we look for how to enforce something like this? I think it's extremely important and needed, but it just seemed a little vague.
Ms. Tyler, I've asked Dr. Springer, our Chief of Student Support Services, to respond to your question at the podium.
Absolutely. The first question, you had a few. The first, let me make sure I heard you correctly. You're asking if a student transmitted any explicit video content or threats on their personal or school-issued computer, would this be included in this code? Is that correct?
Yeah, so I'm asking, does this new code only apply to the school-issued computers? Or is it school-issued computers and personal devices?
Yes, thank you.
And if it is personal devices, is it contingent upon where that happens? Is it only on school grounds? Or if it's something that they share off-school grounds or at home at a later time?
Absolutely. So it encompasses personal devices, school-issued devices as well. If there was an incident that occurred off-campus that impacted the school environment, then there are other additional codes that can be utilized, such as off-campus behavior, to address those such incidents. So if the behavior is disruptive to the environment, we will certainly utilize the Code of Conduct to respond.
Okay. Thank you, that's helpful. And then, I guess, is there... I know that one of the things that it said is, you know, viewing or distribution of these images or videos or fights, and it doesn't specify whether that's a student or just some random video that's found online. And I understand that it said that if a student's rights are perceived to be violated, then that would follow the Title IX rules at that point. So I guess that would remain the same. It doesn't matter if it is about a student at the school or if it is something that is just found floating around on the internet. If it is viewed as going against these norms, then there would be some sort of offense write-up for that. Is that correct? Am I reading it right properly?
You are correct. Again, the premise there is if there is a disruption to the school environment, the learning environment. So based upon something that may have happened outside, if it was floating, if it is impacting the school environment and a student's experience at school, then certainly there will be a response, a disciplinary response.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just writing it down. Thank you, that's helpful. That's really helpful, because I have seen some inconsistencies in how that's been handled over the last couple of years once we've started handing out more school computers, but also even personal devices. Some schools have handled it differently based on whether or not it's at school grounds or off-school grounds. So it's good to know that if it is impacting the learning environment, it does not matter where it happens. There would be some sort of response to that. That's helpful. My next question was... My next question was about the change in the information about drugs. It says, one of the things that it changed is it is talking about giving a definition to possession. Let me see if I'm scrolling down to it right now. It says, "The MMPS policy distribution based on possession constitutes one possession of one or more ounces of any controlled substance and/or legend drug," which is prescription, "or two, possession of three or more vapes containing a controlled substance." And my question is, why does a student have to have three or more vapes containing a controlled substance to count as possession instead of one or two vapes with a controlled substance? And that's really, for me, because I don't know enough about vapes to know how they compare to ounces of a controlled substance. So, I just want some clarity around how those amounts were chosen.
I'm working to get to the space where you are.
Sorry. It's lower. It's disciplinary tables 505. It's the updaters of the drugs.
Got it. So, the intent here, the adjustment here is to call out the word exchange in the definition. So, that's the change that is being made. In terms of the amount of drugs, I believe that possession of any drug, so it could be one, two, or three vapes, we just want to make sure that we are clear about the response, given the amount that may be may be found on a student. And so, any possession of a drug will result in a disciplinary action. So, if a student had one vape pen, there is a disciplinary action, et cetera.
Okay. Because, well, then I'm confused, because it says at the, you know, at the bottom of what we saw, it says possession of three or more vapes, and it doesn't say any amount of vapes containing a controlled substance. It's specific to say three or more. So, that's why I was confused. Is that, do we need to change that wording to match what you said? Do we need to, how do we need to make sure that that's handled? Because if you're telling me that it's any amount of vape with a controlled substance, then there would be some sort of response to that. But the wording in here says three or more.
So, that is specifically speaking to the distribution of drugs. If a student is in possession of any drug, there will be a disciplinary response. But when we talk about distribution, which is a different type of response, right? So, distribution results in an immediate expulsion of 180 days. That's a different response. If you are in possession of drugs, there is an option to attend first-time drug offenders class and course, and after you finish that course, you are able to resume learning at your current school of origin. So, the difference here is around the distribution of the drug instead of possession.
Okay. That makes sense. I appreciate that clarification.
Absolutely.
I see that distribution. All right. Those were my only questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Springer. All right. Do we have a motion to accept Student Handbook as amended?
Motion to approve the Student Handbook as amended. Press present.
All right. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right. Thank you. Now, we move on to student discipline appeals. So, let me level set for the board. We haven't had these in a couple of years, but there's an appeals process when a student is doled out any major consequence, disciplinary consequence. There's a process by which they can appeal a decision. We are voting tonight on whether or not to have a hearing for two separate students. So, we'll take two separate votes. Again, if we move, I mean, if we decide to hold the hearing, that will not happen tonight. That will happen either before or after the next board meeting. Again, tonight, we're only voting on whether or not to have the hearing. So, we won't say students' names or the schools of origin. I will instead use their initials. So, we'll start with case one, the student RE. Do I have a motion on the table regarding the student's appeal?
Motion to approve to have student appeal.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Just for clarification, the motion today would be whether or not to have a hearing.
Oh, sorry.
The motion stated was for an appeal.
Okay. Oh. My apologies. Can you restate?
So, I make a motion to have a student discipline hearing?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I don't mean to pick on you, John. Were you raising your hand? Okay. All right. Go ahead.
See, Dr. Sevier started it.
Did you have a, did you have one too?
No. I was just making fun of John. Sorry.
Someone needs a second. The motion.
Do we have a second?
I've seconded, yes.
All right. No discussion? All right. Abigail, did you have a question?
I have a question. Yeah. So, is this motion saying that we would want them to be allowed to appeal, to have a separate meeting where they would be allowed to appeal? Is that what this is for?
So, that, yeah, it's called a hearing. During that hearing, we would hear from both parties. We would hear from whoever made the decision, and we would hear from likely the parent and, I mean, the student and an advocate of some sort, or a parent, or even potentially a lawyer. So, we're just voting on whether or not to actually allow the hearing. It will be closed to the public. It will only be us and the two parties here. We'll hear both sides, ask questions of them. We will then clear the room again and then vote to either uphold the decision that was made regarding the student or to make a different recommend, or to make a different decision.
Okay.
Due process.
Yeah. We are the final.
Yeah. And this is about just the first one right now?
RE, yes. Student initials RE.
Sorry. I'm trying to catch up, being outside of the area.
No worries.
I guess my concern with this, is it okay if I go ahead and speak?
As long as you don't make any remarks relating to the student, then yes.
Yes. Just in generalities, I think my concern with this particular one to being allowed is that the fact that that all of her previous incidents have been documented pretty extensively, and then the fact that she decided to attack another student inside an administrator's office, and it was unrelated to anything.
I'm sorry. Hold up, Abigail. We're talking about the student, so we can't, that would happen during a hearing. So, again, we can only discuss the facts of, or the allegations.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, I think the motion before the board right now is whether or not to have a hearing or to decide it on the record.
Yes.
That's solely what this is limited to rather than.
Yeah. So, we can't make, this decision to have a hearing is just a decision to have a hearing or not, not to discuss any of the previous decision. I mean.
If we decide not to have a hearing, what does that mean then?
Then we uphold the decision that was made previously.
Oppose the decision that was made?
Uphold.
Uphold.
Uphold, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Thank you.
And so, I will say, I typically ask the board to consider, because we are the last stop in the process, you know, we believe in the process, I believe in our MMPS staff, I just really believe that if students take the time to appeal, since we're the last stop, let's at least give them their moment in democracy. And during that time, though, if you had suggestions, questions, or thoughts about the allegations, you could certainly use that time to argue it. It'll be closed to the public, so no one else would hear it, and we would speak discreetly. Any other questions about, or any further discussion about the first case, RE, student RE? All right. We have a motion on the floor to allow a hearing. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right. Motion, all opposed? All right. One opposed. All right. We have a second student, FO. Do I have a motion on the floor related to student FO?
Motion to have a hearing for student FO.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor of having a hearing for the second student with initials FO, please raise your hand. Passed unanimously. Dr. Sevier, Metro Legal, we will work to decide if it will either be before or after the next meeting, and we, I'm sure you, and then we will ask you all to publicly notice it and then inform both parties. All right. Thank you all. We now move into committee reports. We don't have it listed here, but we had a meeting before this around the amended budget. Board Chair, I'm sorry, Budget Chair, Free to Player.
Yes. So, we approved unanimously, unanimously, if I can articulate my words, the fiscal year 22-23 budget at $1.1 billion with the new additions from, the new, the additional allocations from Metro Council that was passed last Tuesday, a week ago today. I just, as I, again, just want to thank the mayor's office, particularly Chair Allen and the council for their work to bring our budget whole, particularly with the $22 million deficit that we had. But also that we fulfilled our commitment to employee compensation being our number one priority, and that especially for support staff. I know support staff has worked really hard to advocate for themselves to get themselves to more of a living wage. It's an ongoing process, but this is a significant investment that was collaborative of all of us on this board that started several years ago with Vice Chair Elrod, starting to make connections with the Metro Council, with their obviously Chair Emily Masters, and with our chair constantly, Board Chair, who constantly advocates for the world and community about our needs and change in Dr. Battle to transforming the budget process to be more collaborative. We know it's not the ideal place, but it's a most significant investment and the most investment we've ever had in metro schools. I'd like to thank HR Director Melissa Berge, who had a big task ahead of her, especially in seven short days, to try to, unless of that. See? There's an alert for you, to celebrate. All right. There goes, we're putting our phones to silent. Be careful. I know. Be careful out there, guys. But really, it's one of the things when the community comes together and advocate for what they want and need, particularly for the employees. I know it has not been an easy journey. You guys have been advocating for a long time, and it's something that we don't take lightly. We know that it has not been an easy journey. You have sacrificed a lot personally and financially. We really tried hard to get to making you a priority. It has not been an easy road. It has not been as smooth a road as we possibly have, but I just really want to commend yourselves because you really put yourselves out there. You made a lot of conversations, not only with us, but with the Metro Council and the mayor's office, to saying what you need and what service you provide to the students. And we hope this is a true effort, that we stand by our word. I know it's not perfect. I wish I can win Powerball and put an extra couple million dollars on top, on top of this to do it, but in two short years, that the way we have made progress, that you guys have been literally working for over a decade to achieve, that you should be proud of yourselves and the board should be proud of themselves of what they have done to really bring this to the forefront and really make the argument that our staff means something and that we don't take their work lightly. You do it as a passion. You can go out there and work anywhere else and make more money, but you do it because you love the community and you love the kids, and it's a sacrifice of love. And even though that shouldn't sacrifice your livelihood, unfortunately, sometimes it does, but hopefully, this is a first real thoughtful step to get you to a place where you can provide for your families, that there's dignity and respect to the work that you do, and that we can literally put our money where our mouth is. And we are really trying really hard to do that. So, we want to say to all of you, I know there's good friends in there, I have, stand beside you in past years, year after year, that it's my personal pleasure, working with you in the past, that we have gotten to the step, and I know what it means to you, and I know what the sacrifice you have made for your children and for your families, working multiple jobs. And as I said, there's been times where there's a support staff member that works at Walgreens, and when I've leave this meeting to go pick up my prescriptions or go to Walgreens, we always have a conversation about, hopefully, she didn't have to work so many hours, and that understand what she goes through, and that's always been a consistent reminder since I've been Budget Chair, to understand what you guys are through, because I see it every day, that I should not have to go to Walgreens and see an MMPS support employee working a second job until nine o'clock at night to do this. So, we're still working, we're still, we're still working for you, just want to admire the service that you are also educating our kids. It may be in a different way than a teacher does it, but you're just as important, and we're just glad to have that. So, just want to thank Mr. Henson, as I said, Melissa Berge, and Dr. Battle, and all the staff that's really helped put the work behind it, given where we started like a month ago into where we are now. So, thank you, and I hope you guys can celebrate a little bit more of that starting next fiscal year. The burden has lifted a little bit lighter, and it makes your work a little bit easier, but we really do value what you do. And I'm done.
Thank you. We talked about this earlier in budget, that there, it took everyone in a lot of different ways making this happen. This really was a year-round effort, but I want to let our staff, remind our staff that even if you don't see the movement, we are consistently advocating. We are consistently having conversations with the mayor, with the council. Dr. Battle continues to go to bat at least once a week. I mean, you know, that this is not something that only happens March through July, that this will continue to be an effort, it will continue to be a lift, and we have not forgotten about you, and we never will. So, thank you all for what you do. Our babies need you. Thank you again, Budget Chair Player. That was this, this is a good day.
It is.
All right. Dr. Sevier, is Mrs. Tyler still on, by any chance?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we'll move to announcements. Mr. Little, I'll let you go, because you've been raising your hand. Okay. All right. Mrs. Elrod?
I just want to thank our staff and students and families that attended the Pride Event on this past Saturday. We had probably doubled the participation as usual. We had a lot of people volunteer to man the tent and everything else, and so it was really wonderful to see everyone come out to support MMPS for All and that we're an affirming location where students can see their schools and their environments as a safe place. And I appreciate that commitment, not only from Dr. Battle and our staff, but also from our families that were there and available to us. And I appreciate the ongoing work that we've done as advocacy and as budget to provide additional raises. And of course, you know, we need to continue that to be a priority, and so I look forward to us ongoing and continuing to have those conversations, but I'm glad that we're here.
Thank you, Mrs. Elrod. Mrs. Player?
I forgot one thing. For those who are here for the budget meeting, we will deal with the bonus. It was not a part of our allocation, overall allocation, because it takes special requirement for metro finance. And so, we're going to deal with that in the upcoming weeks, but we have not forgot about that. But we will make sure we do it correctly and efficiently. And so, our first priority was adjusting the pay scale, and then next, we will move on to the extra $5 million and how that will be dispersed, so it will be approved by metro government. So, I forgot to mention that. And happy Pride. It was an honor to stand next to my colleague and get to meet Leslie Jordan behind the scenes, and he said, "Thank you for the work that we do," and proud of metro schools for having an affirming environment. So, as we kind of bring that to a close, and I hope everyone has a good Fourth of July weekend.
I just want to thank the team that put together the art show for us to enjoy. Prior to the board meeting, we got to walk through the support hub and see all kinds of student artwork, and it was very lovely, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Two quick announcements. One, I will continue to appreciate those who in Nashville are looking to be allies, even if one struggle is not your own. There was an interesting situation on Saturday when I took my son to the Pride Parade. So many people were just clapping and excited to see MMPS there, and then I had a lady yell at me, saying that I was indoctrinating my son. I think it's important to have allies, to speak up when you can't. So, let's continue to do that better in Nashville. Second thing I'm really excited about, and hope you are as well, we have started the paperwork to form a Pearl Cone Cluster-wide PTO. We've already established two officers who have begun their training. There's not a single zone school in my cluster that has a PTO, which means that they cannot accept direct donations, but that will all change come August 1st. I would love to be, we're documenting this also because we have a lot of support of the faith-based organizations in 37208. I've already gotten a lot of questions about how to replicate this later, so please know that we're taking notes. We're documenting each step. We're making sure we understand how this will live on beyond this first year of officers, and we would love to see this happen in other parts of town, because we know every school is not made equally, because not every community is made equally. But we will, we will change that, because more than anything, as parents, we all need support, but we know our educators need the support of parents in the community, and that's what we're hoping to do. So, cannot wait to see you all. We're meeting June, I'm sorry, July 17th at 3:00 PM at Lee Chapel, if you're able to join. We'll put out more reminders, and there will certainly be more meetings for anyone that wants to support the North Net or the Pearl Cone. that wants to support the North Net or the Pearl Cone Cluster-wide PTO. But be that moment know for their business, this meeting is adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.